You're good to go.
So I'd like to call the meeting to order of the ESOWM metal planning board of Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. Those in attendance are Tyde Richards, George Kingston, Jonathan Torsha, Peter Punderson, and myself, Russell Denver. And we also have Bethany Yao from the ESOWM metal planning department. We are, this Zoom conference meeting is being filmed by the IT Director Ryan Quimby, and it will be submitted to LCAT for their, for their recordings for the public. And if there's anyone else who is recording the meeting, if you could please state your name. Hearing none, I'd like to go to the first item, which is the approval of the minutes of the April 21st, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And do I hear a motion to accept?
Move to accept, George.
Second?
I'll second.
Have a motion been made in second to approve the minutes submitted for the April 21st, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, that item passes. Mr. Clerk, item one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. SPRW 2019-44 Home Office, request by applicant for site plan waiver for a home office at 241 Peace Road, Assessors Parcel ID 43-21-0, on 1.06 plus or minus acre site in Residence AA Zoning District. The applicant is Pollyanna Perillo, 241 Peace Road, East Long Metal, Mass. This is continued December 17th, 2019, January 21st, 2020, February 18th, 2020, and April 21st, 2020.
Is the petitioner online? And Beth, I spoke to Bethany this morning. She had not heard from the petitioner. I'm going to tell you what my recommendation is, is we either vote no, or we vote to continue. But I'll tell you, my vote would be no to continue. So I open it to the board for your consideration.
I'd like to make a motion to vote no to continue, and no to end this.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
So we've motion made in second to vote no on this issue. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to deny this request, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay. Hearing none.
We have to do a roll call.
A roll call. Mr. Torsha.
Aye. Yes, to deny.
Yeah. Mr. Punderson.
I'm gonna have to tell you, I didn't hear any of the conversation because of like computer connection.
So let me try one more time. So this is, we can either vote no on this request, or vote to continue because the petitioner is not available. I had indicated that I would be voting no, because this would be the fifth time that the item would, or the fourth time they're for it to be continued. There was a motion made and seconded to vote no on this request. So-
Mr. Chairman, may I add one other thing? It's not just that it's been the fourth time it's been continued. We've also haven't heard a word from her.
Oh, okay. Well, while I'm up and running, I'm gonna vote to say no. So, so the votes are, you vote yea to deny, or nay to not deny. This is terrible. Mr. Richards?
Yea.
Mr. Kingston?
Yea.
Mr. Denver, yea. So this item passes for, or the motion passes four to zero. And I'll put Mr. Punderson down as a nay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'll just commit when I can.
Okay. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
SPRW 2020-10 Craig Reves Creative, request by applicant for site plan review waiver for a photography and multimedia studio at 51 Prospect Street, Assessors Parcel ID 27-154A-A, Office Number 3, on 1.23 plus or minus acre site in the Business Zoning District. The applicant is Craig Reves, 15 Woodland Drive, Hampden, Mass.
Is Mr. Revest available, or Rivest available?
He does. I'm gonna pull him in right now for you.
Thank you. Mr. Rivest?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's popping up on my screen now, so.
Thank you for joining us in this unusual circumstance.
Not a problem. Thanks for having me.
So just tell us a little bit about the business, hours of operation, what you intend to do there, those type of things.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a digital content creator. I make photos and videos for small businesses, corporations, families. Basically, it's just gonna be an editing studio. Gives me more space to do product photography, video work for clients, and a space to house gear. There won't be a lot of foot traffic. It's me, I'm the sole owner, so it's just gonna be me as the employee, me as the owner. On occasion, there may be a client here or two for headshots or a photo, or an audio session of some sort.
Are you gonna be a tenant in the building?
I'm a tenant in the building, yes.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Motion made.
I'll second. So a motion made and seconded to approve this request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay. Hearing none. There you go. We're all set. Congratulations. Thank you. Item three, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, SPRW 2020-11 Home Office, request by applicant for site plan review waiver for a home office at 4, At My Table, an off-site personal chef business at 12 Pine Street, Assessors Parcel ID 2-55-30, on 1.13 plus or minus acre site in Residential C Zoning District. The applicant is Linda Tyloff, 12 Pine Street, East Long Metal, Mass.
Is the applicant available? Yep, I'm gonna pull her in right now. Thank you.
Russ, I'd like to remind you that we're supposed to roll call votes on-
Okay.
On video. Okay. I don't think anybody's gonna question the last one, but-
Hi there.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, sorry, that's my daughter's name from school.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
So we'd just like to know a little bit about the business, hours of operation, whether you'll have clients, you're going to that location, whether you're gonna have any commercial vehicles there, that type of thing. So can you fill us in?
Yes, so I'm a trained chef, and my business would consist of me going to the grocery store, the market, purchasing food on behalf of a client, going to their home, prepping the food in their home, and leaving it for them to reheat. And so I wouldn't, at this point, be using a commercial vehicle, and none of the cooking would be done at my residence. So I wouldn't really need to be transporting anything. I mean, I might transport a frying pan or two, and my chef's knife, but no large items. I would need a commercial kitchen, which I know that for that. And so, no, no clients would come here. I would probably always just go there, and my home office would be just for billing and menu planning, things like that.
Okay. Any questions from the board for the petitioner?
None here.
Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Motion to-
Your motion?
Motion to approve.
So we have motion to, and a second. So the motion main, seconded to approve this request. So by roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Yep.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And myself, Russell Denver, yes. Congratulations, best of luck. Welcome to town.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item of business, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, SPRW 2020-12 The Hazel, request by applicant for site plan review waiver for a hair salon at 364 AKA 618 North Main Street, Assessors Parcel ID 1-17-49, on 1.23 plus or minus acre site in the Business Zoning District. The applicant is Diane Karen and John Karen at 600 Glendale Road, Wilberham.
And are the petitioners available?
Yep, pull her in.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Thank you for joining us. So-
Thank you for having me.
Sure. We'd like to know a little bit about the business, you know, number of people who will be working there, hours of operation, whether there's commercial vehicles, that type of thing. So if you could let us know.
Go ahead. So the, it's gonna be pretty straightforward. It's a hair salon. It's been in that location, or that location has been a hair salon for quite a few years. Number of customers per day, anywhere from two to 10 at this point. Number of employees, two to three. And-
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation, anything that's convenient to the client, pretty much nine to nine, which is standard with the Plaza.
So is that the Pride Plaza?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? Bethany, Bethany, is there something we should be knowing about this property?
Yes, there's currently taxes owed on this property. The property owner has been notified. So your approval, if granted, would be conditional on those back taxes being paid.
Correct. And we had talked about that. Yep.
So if there's no more questions, do I have a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, George.
Conditioned upon the payment of the real estate taxes.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion made in second to approve this request, conditional upon payment of the real estate taxes that are owing the town. So we'll do a roll call on this. Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye with the conditions.
Yeah. Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And myself, Russell Denver, aye. So this matter passes.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye. Item five, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, SPRW 2020-13 Just Like Home, Inc., request by applicant for site plan review waiver for a daycare business at 357A Shakers Road, Assessors Parcel ID 20-5-0, on a half acre plus or minus site in the Industrial Garden Zoning District. The applicant is Melissa, oh boy, should, I'm having a difficult time pronouncing her name. If she's on, maybe she can say it for us. 165 Shaker Road, East Long Metal, Mass.
And is the petitioner available? Oh, I see her name coming up.
Oh, good. Praise the Lord.
Melissa?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but we can't see you.
Okay, I could see all of you before. Hold on. Why did it change?
By the way, can you say your last name for me, please?
Yes, Schechterly.
I am so sorry. I-
It's okay. You guys, listen, I've been between, I've been in the town for 22 years, have come in front of you guys many times. You could never say it. It's okay. It's okay.
So you've been in front of us a number of times.
Yes, I have. I remember many of you.
Okay, so-
But Don's not there. Where's Don?
Oh, he's on the town council now. So you haven't been here in a while, anyway.
Yeah, okay.
So, so tell us a little bit about the business, the number of kids you anticipate to have, number of staff you have, hours of operation, that type of thing.
Absolutely. So I've been in the town 22 years, and each time I've downsized. So the first time, I opened up at 95 Shaker, and I had over 80 kids. The second time, 10 years later, 11 years later, actually, I went to 165 Shaker, which I love my building. I love my location. It's right on the bike trail. The problem is that it's too big, and I can't get part of it rented out. I've tried to do it every which way I can, and it's just, we can't afford it any longer. So I found 357, which is ideal, especially with everything that just happened with the COVID, because it has a circular parking lot. So it'll allow for drop-off and pickup, which is one of the regulations they're encouraging in Massachusetts with daycares. It's something I asked the planning board for 20 years ago, and they didn't want it to happen. Karen Wheeler was the only one grandfathered in with that. So it's kinda weird how life kinda recircles. I'm in a little bit of a unique situation, which I, I'm definitely looking for some help. We're downsizing. We're only taking the front part of the building. There, there is two other tenants in there, one of which is the owner, and he knows, I've already discussed with him, that I know what you guys are going to be looking for. And if I'm doing a traffic around the building, I've done this enough to know, that anytime the children would be outside the building, no traffic can enter that circle. So I plan on having no traffic allowed between 10 and 2, and no traffic allowed between 2 and 4. Getting signs posted, the architect is doing the plans as we speak, getting them expedited for me. There will be the handicap parking. We won't need as much parking as we did years ago to the one space per three families, because majority is pickup and drop-off now. My hours of operation are still the same, 7:00 AM to 5:30. So we'll have pickup and drop-off. It will not be open at 7:00, because I need to have additional staff there. So from 7:00 to 7:30, they'll walk in, but we have no parents currently that come in between 7:00 and 7:30. We're all very, maybe one. So drop-off will start at 7:30. There'll be an additional staff member just for pickup and drop-off. We'll run 7:30 to 9:00, when the children will then go to their classes. At 9:00, anyone that comes at that point will have to park in a space and walk them in and sign them in. But again, majority of all parents drop off before 9:00 AM. And then we would start it as early as 4:00 in the afternoon. That's why I did the no traffic between 2:00 and 4:00. So anyone that arrives before 4:00, again, has to park in a spot. The architect seems to be able to come up with between eight to nine spaces, plus a handicap, and the blocking off of the right-of-way for around the traffic circle. The playground will be in the back. The architect is making sure that it's safety within feet from however much needs to be with the road that comes around. Downsizing children, I'm going to be less than 30 now. I'm not gonna need any more than four to six staff there at one, during one day. It'll be a much smaller, much smaller, I just didn't, I didn't wanna let it go yet. I love it. I built it with my bare hands. I don't wanna let it go yet.
So I have two questions, if I could interrupt you for a minute.
Absolutely.
So can you kind of focus on what building exactly that is?
It's the old dance academy. So it's already been suited for kids, in a way. It's actually great. It's a big, open, airy room in the front. I'm not having infants anymore, because I don't wanna deal with sprinklers and fire alarm codes and all those wonderful things. So I'm, we're cutting it to toddlers to the older, before school, after school, so up to seven, basically. Not dealing with any transportation. I'm not having any of that.
So much of your business is really kind of regulated by the state, correct?
Correct, EEC.
Okay.
Correct.
Now, are you gonna be using the entire building?
No, not at all.
So how is that gonna work, when you have like a daycare in part of the building, in industrial use in the rest of the building?
Well, it's, I don't know, I guess it's industrial use. It's the landlord's own storage of his own things, his construction materials, those kind of things. So he doesn't really, there's never anybody there on site that's actually working. It's a storage place for a painter, a painter, an independent contractor. And my landlord keeps his materials and things there for building. And it was absolutely one of the premises that we discussed when I first was interested in this, was that I can't have people driving around that parking lot between those hours. So as long as there are, there is a door separating from where his area begins, and I will make sure it's double-doored, so there's a lock on both sides, if that makes sense.
I- Go ahead, George.
I was gonna say, I, I like the idea. I think it's a great use for the place. I'm concerned, though, that we're changing the layout of the parking lot and the traffic flow. I really think that that should require the filing of a site plan, because we're altering the site.
I assumed I was going to have to do a site plan. I've done one every time. But it's really not altering it, because it has the existing going around. It's used as that already. There's nothing blocking it. I can drive completely around that building right now. So it's not changing the traffic. That's how it used to be for the dance academy. They even, you can still see the lines where those first spaces that used to be spaces are now crossed off, because your directional circle needed to have that. So I assumed you'd ask for that, but to be honest, we're not changing it.
I was just thinking that you're already getting plans drawn up by an architect. Those plans, give us a copy of those plans. That's basically site plan review.
Absolutely. That's my last big favor request that I have to ask after you're done with your questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, there's 15 spaces out front, and you're saying that they all go away?
No, they're not going away at all. I think what she ended up having on the plan, I think we came up with nine, because I have to have a handicap, and I think by daycare, I think there's a code that it has to be van accessible. So it takes, I believe, one and a half, if not two, spaces. And then she says I will lose those top two spaces because of the directional traffic circle. But I will still have, I won't have under nine, and I wouldn't need more than that. But I won't have under that.
This, this playground, so is this an existing playground, or something that'll be constructed?
No, if you, if you have the, do you have the GIS up, Mr. Richards? Is that where you're at? Okay. So see in that back left corner, are you able to see the road, the traffic, that, the driveway that comes around?
Yeah, basically, the whole site's paved, and behind the building, it looks like there's some storage containers or something like that up against the property line.
That back left corner, we're able to pull a 90 by 50 foot, which is plenty big, playground. I have my existing vinyl fence, which is in excellent condition. And the architect said it still gives me plenty of clearance of the drive around. And the gate, the gate entering the playground would be in that far left corner. So furthest point away from the traffic circle. And again, anytime that the children are outside in that playground, there's no traffic allowed in the circle. And we are installing a driveway sensor alert that will alert to anyone coming in.
So what, with the governor's announcement yesterday-
This brings me to my next question.
So, so you're still not allowed to open until, I believe, June 29th?
We are June 29th, and your next meeting is June 19th. And I am asking, as a 22-year veteran in the town, is there any way you would meet with me in a special meeting a week or two weeks before?
So we do have a scheduled meeting the first Tuesday in June.
Okay.
It's normally a working meeting, but if we need to continue things to help the petitioners, we often do that.
We actually, Mr. Chairman, we have an election the first Tuesday of June. So I think it's just only that Tuesday later in the month will be-
So I really didn't hear a word you said, Jonathan.
There's a town election the first Tuesday next month. So the only scheduled meeting would be shortly, I think about a week or two before that deadline, that date there, the June 29th. I think it's a week or two before that.
Bethany, what's our schedule for June?
So we actually have to talk about that. The June 9th and June 23rd is what we had scheduled before. However, there's a conflicting, there's another town meeting that night, and the Zoom account can only do one meeting per night at the same time. So we could either do the 16th and the 30th, or the 2nd and the 16th, I believe.
So let's discuss that now, if you're okay, Melissa. Let us kind of get our schedule down.
I know. I don't mind.
Yep. So Bethany, do we have other items that you anticipate to be on in June, like for June 2nd?
As a work meeting, not this moment, unless you'd like to continue discussion of some of the items later on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, like the master plan, and what items for the, for the hazard plan, and what items for the, for the consultant we're getting from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for a period of time. So those are, those are three items right there, potentially. We could add this. So what's, what's the will of the board? Are you willing to meet June 2nd?
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely.
Let me ask the board first.
Sorry. Sorry.
I am certainly available, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Everyone else?
Yes, I'm available.
Okay.
I wouldn't be killing it on the same day of an election.
Is the 2nd an election?
Yes.
I thought, I thought you said June 5th was.
June 5th is a Friday. June 2nd is.
Okay, then it would have to be the 16th.
Why not the 9th?
That's a conflicting, another town meeting then, right, Ryan?
It more than likely is. The difference would be, you could have it at a different time, either earlier, as long as you keep it to an hour. That would just be the one thing. And I would just go, like, this more earlier this evening, I had the Court of Assessors, and now you guys, so.
I'll have all my, I'll have everything dotted and crossed, and keep it under an hour.
Yeah. So I am happy to conduct a one-hour meeting at 5:00 on June 9th. Is that the date, June 9th? Yep. I am happy to do that, if everyone else is willing to do so.
I'm good. That's good with me.
All right. So your quest is, would you, so your quest is for us to continue this until our meeting on June 9th at 5:00?
I'm gonna plan to get with Bethany and have everything that you'll need answered. I'll have my sign permit. I'll do my application. I'll get the site plan to the, I've been down it before. I'll have it all for you. I know I will.
So you've heard some of the questions. You know, Mr. Richards had a number of questions. Mr. Kingston had a number of questions. And you might wanna just go back and review this at a later date, to make sure you pick up all of their concerns.
Can I do that? How do I do that? Where will this be saved, before I lose you?
YouTube, right?
LCAT.
Bethany, will you show me later?
Yep.
As well, it's on Facebook, too.
Okay.
So the petitioner's requesting a-
Can I ask Mr. Richards one question?
Sure.
How many parking spaces would you like to see me have, if I am under 30 families now, and five staff minimum at one time? And they're not picking up and dropping off?
Yeah. How many employees do you have?
I'm down to five there at one time.
All right. So I mean, maybe the nine would be fine.
Okay.
How does, how does the rest of the members feel? But I mean, if she's got five employees, and each have a car, and you have a couple of extras, you know, I don't know if that's really a big deal. But what do you guys think?
I think it's, it's fine by me. I would, just procedurally, we should deny the request for waiver, and do the hearing for the site plan, is my feel.
Okay.
But am I approved to go into that zone? I need to know that. That I'm okay with?
That's an allowed use in the zone.
Okay.
There are other daycares in that zone, certainly.
The largest daycare company that exists is in that zone.
Yeah, I know. That's the one that made my building I'm in right now too big for me to manage.
Oh, that's too bad.
That's the one. I love where I am. We're right on the bike trail. I don't wanna leave it, but I can't have 4,800 square feet anymore. Not with them open. Not with them open.
Yeah. So George mentioned that the process should be that we should deny the waiver.
Okay.
Then you would be, come back before us on June 9th for a site plan review.
Great.
So do I have a motion for that?
I, I, I will move that and remind you that that's a public hearing that needs to be advertised.
Yep.
Okay, Bethany knows all that.
Yep.
He sure does.
Okay. Do I have a second for George's motion?
I will second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Oh, well, we'll do a roll call. So those in favor of denying the waiver, the site plan waiver, is a yes. Um, so do Mr. Torsa?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Denver, yes. So we will see you back on June 9th at five o'clock.
I'll be there. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Bethany, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Just one moment before you go. Are there any other, are there any other issues with this property, Bethany?
Yes.
Um, yes, there's also back taxes owed by the property owner and Melissa's aware of it.
So let's, uh, let's make it cleaner.
Yeah.
And let's, let's get those paid so we don't have to put a condition on it.
I know. I made that aware to him today.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Bethany, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Next item.
Okay, we have an A and R 2020, 1-55, excuse me, let me start over again. A and R 2020-1, 55 Newberry Avenue, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to be, not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law to merge 55 Newberry Ave. Assessors parcel ID 15B-4-230 in zero Neptune Ave. Assessors parcel ID 15B-9-253 into a combined parcel totaling 0.43 plus or minus acres located in residential C zoning district. The applicants are Timothy and Catherine Ball, 55 Newberry Ave, Islam Meadow Mass.
And are the petitioners available?
Uh, I don't see anybody with that name. So if you're in the audience, raise your hand in the app and I can promote you to a panelist.
Or their representative?
Representative. All right, Paul and Mike Smith in right now.
Hello?
Hello.
I think I'm good. Hi, how are you? Mike Smith, Mike Smith from Smith Associate Surveyors.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you. Yourself?
Um, well, so walk us through, uh, the request, please.
So the applicant was going to try to put an addition on the house and the building inspector told them that they needed to combine. Uh, they were deeded, uh, technically six parcels in their deed, two different parcels on the GIS. Um, so really all they're doing is just, is combining them all into one parcel. Um, so, so they can work with the building inspector.
Can you tell me how large the addition is that they anticipate putting on?
I do not know. I think they're in design phase. They, they did not mention anything about the size of the addition. I was only hired to, to combine the property together.
Okay.
So Michael?
Yes.
Um, so basically we're talking about is 55 Newberry, which has the frontage on the, on the street. And then basically their whole backyard is a separate parcel and those are the two we're merging together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's a paper street out back.
Yeah, now the paper street, um, who owns that paper street?
Uh, it's probably, I don't know if it's been abandoned yet. I don't think it has. I mean, technically.
Yeah, yeah, when you click on it, it comes up with, with no, with no information whatsoever. And the town of Islam Meadow does own, um, an adjacent parcel to that. And then of course you got Vita Valley that owns the other two sections on the other side of the paper street. But it just seems like that's just a waste of land, just sitting there doing nothing, that paper street. And I know I'm kind of getting off of track here, but you know, nice to know more about what's going on with that and getting that resolved, even though it would have no bearing on this application.
I mean, they could certainly abandon the road and the direct of Butters would own to the center line of the road. So on both sides of the road, you don't perpendicular to the center line of the road. Um, I, I don't think anybody will probably ever go through that because it's, I think there's some wetlands back there. You're inside of the riverfront area, I believe. And I'm sure George would know that, I think that that area would all be swampland and, and probably not developable.
I'm well familiar with that, that area. It is all swamp. Um, you, you need to understand, a paper street has never been accepted. So it can't be abandoned per se. Okay, it's just on the map. And typically, you're right, the, the Butters own to the center of the paper street.
Yeah.
Okay. And that paper street is going right through a swamp. So it will never be developed.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about developing or just thinking about cleaning up some of these lot lines here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would come down to having somebody foot the bill to have a plan drawn up, uh, doing it and I, I'm not.
I, I, I think we might as well move on.
Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Smith? Hearing none. So this is a request by the applicant for an endorsement of a plan. So I believe the vote is to endorse the plan, not approve the plan, but to endorse the plan. So do I have a motion to endorse the plan as submitted? And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion been made and seconded to endorse the plan as submitted. And we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Torsa?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And Mr. Denver is an aye. So this endorsement is approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Mr., next we have a public hearing. And this is going to be Case Site 2020-2, request by applicant for a site plan review for a carryout restaurant at 64 Maple Street. Assessors parcel ID 27-9-0, an existing structure known as Historic Train Depot, consisting of 800 square feet plus or minus, located on 3.08 plus or minus acres in the business zoning district. The applicant is Stephen Graham, 35 Industrial Drive, Islam Meadow, Mass.
And I'm, I see Mr. Graham's name?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you see me? Okay.
We can. Hello.
Good evening. What are you doing?
So we're, we're getting close. We're, we're kind of hoping we can put this to bed, hopefully tonight.
Great.
So why don't you tell us about the progress that you've made, some of the changes that needed to be addressed? I know that Mr. Kingston, back in January, had questions about the ingress and the egress and the amount of parking. So if you could kind of walk, at least start there and walk us through.
Okay, the, um, there are actually two points of, of egress. And I'll refer to them as east and west, uh, on the site plan. Um, west being closer to the rail trail, which is an existing access point. At least 40 feet wide. And then the eastern egress, which also exists, is approximately 40 feet wide as well. The existing parking has all been uncovered. It, it was buried for many years. And, uh, there's a significant paved area, actually with parking spaces laid out, including one handicap space. And the total parking spaces that exist right now are 15. The, um, the requirement for parking is six spaces. So I think we're in pretty good shape there. We do have significant property, as you can now see by riding by it, that shows it's, um, the, the total available area. And we will easily be able to park more than 16 cars, um, if needed.
So, um, Bethany, we received comments from Mr. Christensen, although you mentioned earlier, can you say what was mentioned earlier to us?
Sure. Uh, he updated us that one, the, one of the items, the, um, pipe has been repaired since he wrote his comments.
And I, I don't recall other comments from, um, there were no comments from police. There were no comments from fire. Um, so pretty clean bill of health here. Um, before I open this to the public, do other, do members of the board have any questions for Mr. Graham? So hearing none, uh, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it to, open it up to anyone who might want to express an opinion on this request or have any comments. So I guess you need to raise your hand so Mr. Quimby can see you if there's anyone. Brian?
I am not seeing any.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we were talking about the DPW comments a minute ago and I think I should just read into the record what his email says.
Okay.
It's clear. And it just says, uh, hello, forgot to mention the pipe was repaired at the depot last week. For what it's worth, remaining comments of my letter should not stand in the way of the approval.
Okay. Great. So hearing, uh, that there are no members of the public who wish to speak on this matter, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Can I get a second? So a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call. So the roll call is to close the public hearing or not. Mr. Torsa?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And myself, Russell Denver is aye. So the public hearing is closed. Does the board have other matters that they wish to discuss with the petitioner or questions or concerns? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
So we've motion made and seconded to approve the site plan. Um, so we'll do a roll call or any discussion before we do the roll call. Hearing none. Mr. Torsa?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And Mr. Denver is an aye. So this matter passes. I'll tell you, Mr. Graham, so I've been a member of the planning board for nearly three years. I have not seen a more anticipated project in this town. You have lots of people rooting for your success. They are overjoyed with the work you're doing in the renovations for the train depot. So I wish you the best of luck, uh, in the future with this project and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Steve. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Best of luck. Thank you. Next item.
I have, um, other business update on the mixed use zoning.
I don't know. Normally Marilyn Richards or Ralph Page are available to fill us in. Uh, Mr. Quimby, do you see them on the line?
I do. Marilyn's joining us in about one second here.
I got my update from her earlier today.
Okay. Hopefully it's exciting. Hello, Marilyn.
Good morning. Good evening, everybody. It's so good to see you all. I miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bethany, for sending the email on this meeting tonight. Um, I appreciated having the ability to sign up very easily. Um, as a counselor and a member of the Planning Matters Subcommittee, I reached out to Don Anderson anticipating that you folks would be asking about the update. Um, the document is complete. The document for the bylaw is now, um, under legal review. We have not met since we have been under lockdown. But we were done just beforehand, so the timing was great for that, um, process. But anyway, the document is, um, being reviewed by Michael Pill, who is our land use attorney. And there are three areas that we're sort of trying to fine tune. And it might mean if he makes some suggestions that we would have to reconvene to address those suggestions. The first has to do with our language, um, governing the parameters for the 10% of affordable units. The concern is that while we're looking to provide an opportunity to meet our regional fair share, we're not looking for a huge, um, affordable housing development. Instead, we're, we're trying to figure out a way that we can legally establish parameters and be willing to move forward with a modest, um, attempt at that. Um, the second piece that we're looking at is the issue of the homeowners association. We know with the uniqueness of a development like this, there will be associations within associations. And so that language is being fine tuned. And also the host community agreement, which, um, will help to perhaps establish the mitigation for anything that comes up with an impact statement, which is a requirement, uh, within the special permit of this project. So the end is in sight. My feeling is that once we hear from Michael Pill and if we need to reconvene, fine. If not, then it goes back to the council and then we're looking to hopefully combine our efforts as planning board, town council to have our public hearing and move forward.
So best guest estimate, uh?
I knew that.
June, July, August?
You know, I, I would have helped, I would have hoped that we would have been beyond this already. I'm not sure what, um, attorney Pill is involved with. I know he's dealing with some very aggressive litigation for the town. So I'm not sure where we are on his calendar, but it was even hard to get in touch with Don Anderson the last couple of days to get a, a, you know, a report on what's happening specifically with, with this legal review. So, okay, here we are. Um, we're heading into June. Um, perhaps, perhaps, maybe if we can move forward, um, by our second meeting in June, that would be wonderful. But we have to publicize it too. So, you know, it, it all depends on when we get the information.
Any other questions? Yeah, any other questions from Marilyn? Thank you very, very much. We appreciate you taking the time to join us and keep the town abreast of this, uh, potential project.
Well, thank you very much. I, I kept wanting to vote yay when you called out Mr. Richards. I think you were calling me. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clark?
I have, uh, 330 Chestnut. That's the same one. Uh, master plan, uh, any update on the master plan?
So, uh, Mary McNally got ahold of Bethany a little bit ago, uh, is unable to attend this evening. Um, so she has indicated that she would like to reach out to, uh, George and myself, uh, for some further discussion this, on this item. So at a minimum, we would be able to email you back what our discussions were. And then we could put it on the, our agenda, our next agenda. So we can certainly let the public, uh, be aware of where we might be on this, on this project. So, okay. Item 10.
Uh, discussion of PVPC Planning Board Assistant with Ken Komi, uh, PVPC Senior Planner.
Hello?
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I am well.
Um, so I'm not sure if, um, Bethany may want to just, um, chime in as far as the, the request for, um, assistance on that we can provide, um, and I can fill in.
Well, let's start with, uh, George, who is a, uh, member of the PVPC Executive Committee and the town's representative. George, do you want to kick it off?
Uh, yeah, I got the copy of the contract from Bethany today. I reviewed it. It's a standard contract. It's what we've had before with them in terms of scope and so on. Um, my feeling is that, uh, $8,000 doesn't go a long way. And so, um, we should limit.
And so we should limit our requests to areas where we feel we need the assistance, where we feel that it's a little bit bigger than what we would normally process and not ask them to review everything. Because we have competent staff, we've got members who are experienced, and only in those areas where we really need additional expertise should we reach out. And I, you know, I know Ken, it's going to be great when we, when we need to do that.
So that kind of, that, if I could, that leads into an email that I got from Kathy Hill, who is Town Council President, about the status of the solar moratorium bylaw. And that then also begs the question of a new solar bylaw, should it be found that the town's current bylaw is invalid? So I would suspect one of the first things that I would want done by PVPC is the drafting of the solar moratorium bylaw rather quickly for us to act on it and then forward it to the town council. That's just my thoughts, Mr. Richards, you were gonna?
Yeah, I came to the same conclusion that George did. What I'd like to do is use them on special cases if we need to. But if we can avoid it, then do that as well. Regarding the possibility of a new bylaw, we can address that, that maybe, that might be one of the things that could fall into that category, but I don't know if I have a response to that tonight. I'd like to add that PVPC has copies of successful moratorium bylaws that other towns have, so it's starting from scratch.
Okay.
There's language out there, likewise, they're working on a model solar bylaw. I don't know the status of that right now, Connie was on that committee and obviously she's not anymore. So I don't know what the status is, but I know that the, prior to the lockdown, they had a committee that was meeting to work on a model solar bylaw, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, we, I am on that working group along with Eric Weiss, who is convening. We're basically, our product is going to be a best practices document, of which will include a model bylaw. So we are working towards that, I haven't spoken to Eric since our last meeting, but I think we're nearing the end and we have some, some good idea of how to proceed with the model bylaw, considering the people that are in the room and, and the insight we've been able to get from a lot of the working group members. So we are nearing the completion of that, and as George mentioned, we do have language for solar bylaws, a solar moratorium bylaw, and I worked on two last year and can furnish those and give those to Bethany to, you know, utilize however you need to.
Bethany, would you like to weigh in on what type of assistance you might need for the, for the dollars we have available?
Sure, I think I agree with George and Todd, keeping review for the more complex cases that we receive. I know summer tends to slow down for us, but with the couple of months delay, we might get backed up a little bit more than usual. Personally, I think I would just need some help in the beginning, just to draft the decisions and make sure those are correct.
Russ?
Yes.
I'd like to pipe in if I can, if you can hear me, because I'm
I can.
I think it's important that we get the moratorium done ASAP. Concerning our existing solar bylaw, it really is a pretty good bylaw, it really, what it's missing is determining sizes of solar rays that can go on certain properties. The rest of the bylaw is really not, basically not flawed, but we didn't go into sizes, small, medium, and large, so we need to discuss that. But our bylaw is pretty, is pretty well written as it stands right now, but it does not include that necessary material.
Jonathan, do you have anything?
But no, I would just say I would agree with what Volvo said earlier. I think the solar rate bylaw will probably have to be the most important thing we look at, because time is sort of ticking on that. So that would be important to look at and maybe to utilize it, help it. It should only be, you know, the service should be only used on a need to be, you know, needed basis, so it doesn't need to be necessarily as broad.
Russ?
So, yes.
Yes, I know, I talked with one of the members of the council and there are, there are, there is, there are some ideas and there's some wording being put together. It's basically a two paragraph type of thing, it's not a long and all thing.
Yep.
It's fairly easy to write, I think we should entertain and listening to the ideas that have been brought forth to me by that member of the town council.
Would you, would you be so kind to forward that language to Bethany? And Beth, Bethany can get it along to Ken? Pete?
You're addressing who?
I'm addressing you, can you hear me?
I can hear you right now.
Okay, so we'd like to forward that language, yeah, to Bethany, yeah, okay.
I'll make sure that's taken care of.
Okay. So Bethany, does this give you, our discussion here, does this give you some material that you can forward to Mary McNally? Kind of what the thoughts, what the thoughts are of the planning board, the issues that we, you know, feel that we need addressed fairly quickly, not only for the planning board, but also for the town council. And George, I imagine between you and Mary, you can take care of the contract.
Yeah, the contract will have to be signed by Mary, it's a standard contract, there's nothing in there that's unusual.
Okay. So Ken, are you looking for any other direction from us?
I will probably be in touch as, as the summer rolls along and maybe more immediate, just considering the certain timeline that we're in. We do have that DLTA project that we're working with the town on, that's specific to the housing element. I was hoping that Mary was going to be on the line regarding the task of a housing chapter. And I was, you know, under the impression that it was a housing chapter for a master plan. If it's another product, we probably should clarify that now.
So I've not been privy to those discussions about a housing chapter. Bethany, can you add to this?
I know it can, it's either a housing chapter for a master plan or it's a housing product.
So we, we lost you for a bit unsound, Bethany. Bethany, if you can hear me, can you shake your head? No, okay.
Wave your hand.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay, so we didn't hear what you said, it was either a housing chapter or, did you say housing production plan?
Correct, yep.
Okay, all right. So I guess there still needs to be some, I guess, communication, so maybe you can work with Ken and Mary and kind of come to the logical conclusion on what the next step should be.
Sure.
Okay. Ken, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you board, you guys have a good night.
Thank you. So the next item, Mr. Clerk?
Discussion of the MVP Action Grant Opportunity with Catherine Ratty, PVPC Principal Planner, Senior Manager.
Catherine? Nope, this is Marilyn.
Hi, sorry to disturb, while you were talking about the solar moratorium, I texted Council Ralph Page. He's on a machine pulling out stump somewhere, I thought he was in the audience.
Okay.
And he sent you an email late this afternoon.
Okay.
Starting the solar moratorium, there's been some research done on all of us trying to figure out how we got lost in this process.
Yeah.
We did receive a sample bylaw from Attorney Jess Timm, who was our town attorney. And it's not a complicated bylaw, so before everyone goes running to reinvent the wheel, I just wanted to have you read his email and perhaps that's what it tells you. So, oh, I just want to let you know that there's been groundwork being done and that my counselor that Pete Punderson talked to, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yes, it was, yes, it was.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thank you. Catherine, how are you?
Good, how are you all?
Good, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so the MVP Action Grants.
Yes, this is actually related to the master plan, it's unfortunate that Mary is not there. The MVP Action Grants were announced on April 22nd, and they are due on June 11th. East Long Meadow is eligible to apply because you're about to be a certified MVP community. And one of the things that you can apply for is funding to do your master plan. So if you don't apply this year, if you miss this June 22nd deadline, you can apply next year, but the town of Palmer just received funding $150,000 for a master plan, not 150,000, they got 112, because there's a 25% match required. So they have a $37,500 local match, but it is something that is eligible. And I know that the town of East Long Meadow has been looking for funding for a master plan, and right now the MVP is one of the most obvious places to fund it. And again, it's a relatively straightforward application process, and we have a wonderful example of the town of Palmer having been successful locally. So we would be happy to help you, help Bethany, help you all apply for the funding. However, the grant is due on June 22nd, I mean June 11th, sorry, it was announced on April 22nd. So we only have three weeks to do it, it's not very complicated, but obviously it would require Mary's support and we'd have to document the 25% match, which can be in kind. So it would definitely be easy to come up with that amount of time with all of your time and the time of your staff.
So Bethany, I'm sure you'll be passing this information along to Mary.
Yep.
Okay, okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate, wonderful to know that we might have the opportunity to find additional funding or alternative funding to be able to do that. I know all the municipalities are going to be strapped, certainly for the next year.
Right.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it. So that's the last official item on the agenda. Mr. Kingston indicated that he would like to inform the board of a discussion he had earlier, I believe, with a developer. And we also received a letter from CVS inquiring about the board's appetite for a drive-through for pharmacies. So why don't we first call upon George, do you want to lead this conversation, George?
Yeah, I was contacted by a representative of the company that manages Heritage Plaza, okay, which is Stop and Shop. And he would, wanted to know what the board's appetite was for drive-ins. And I explained to him that our bylaw does not allow drive-ins for human consumption, which includes pharmacies, but does not include banks. My suggestion to him was that rather than working through the planning board, that he should approach town council, because the council is elected. And it would not be a good idea for the planning board to bring a proposal to council that council was not in favor of, if you will, or not looking on favorably. And so I suggested that any change to the bylaw ought to originate with the council, rather than with the plan.
George, we lost you. George?
Yeah, I think he froze him.
He's not going to be happy when I ask him to repeat the entire conversation.
I thought it was just me that it was happening.
George, so George?
Yeah.
You, you froze about a minute ago, so, yeah.
But did you get the thing about town council?
Yes, yeah, you advise them to go to town council because they're an elected board, it makes no sense for the planning board to submit something to the town council that would, you know, potentially fail if they were not in favor of it.
Right, and I also wanted, just wanted to add that in my discussions with residents in the town, the concept of drive-throughs is pretty much negative, largely because of fast food. George? Yeah. How does people, how do you think people would feel about an exception being made for drugstores only? The problem is writing the bylaw so that it the problem is the language of the bylaw, how do you specify one kind of business and not another kind of business? That's really what it comes down to. And The way I would, the way I would consider couching it without stepping on anyone's toes is that it's for the purpose of prescription drugs only, which is a medical convenience and not one for necessarily consumer convenience. Again, I think it's something that ought to originate with the council. No, I don't disagree with that, I agree with that, but in general, I would be probably more inclined to consider a drugstore exception for prescription drugs only. That's, that's one way to approach it.
Other members have comments on this?
My comment would be, you do it for one, you have to do it for everybody, I would be hard pressed to change my mind on allowing it.
Jonathan?
I think, I think considering the extraordinary circumstances that we're currently in and potentially could be projected, I think it is worth, I'm not saying I'm in favor of changing it, but it's worth having potentially a debate that's originated from town council about either amending it to make this exception or completely relooking at the bylaw. Just because, you know, we don't know how long things will happen and how comfortable people will be going into a place, getting their medication or even getting food, so it's just worth it, worth a thought to maybe look at the bylaw, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a tremendous amount of experience in the drugstore development business. And what you'll find is the drugs, the drive-throughs really do very, very little business at all. And really, the purpose of them is to try to keep sickness out of the store, is try to keep sick people a convenience for them while they're picking up their prescriptions usually on their way home from their, an appointment, a doctor's appointment, and also it's really for those purposes, it's, you know, as opposed to, you know, convenience for fast food and donuts and coffee and all this other kind of stuff, which gets out of control, and very rarely are there ever more than one or two cars ever in a drugstore drive-through line.
Okay, good. I'm going to reserve my, my comments, so I'm not going to add to this discussion. Are there other matters properly before the planning board? Bethany, did we hit everything?
There's nothing at the moment.
Okay, so would you please do us a favor, would you please post the new meeting date? You know, send a reminder out, obviously there needs to be another public, there needs to be a public hearing for the review of the site plan for the, for the daycare, so that needs to be posted. And I am kind of hoping, we've, we've enjoyed your company, Mr. Quimby, but maybe by that time, we might actually have a physical meeting. We never know, but if, if we don't use your services again, thank you, you've been very helpful, I greatly appreciate it. So So hearing that there's no other matters, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And all in favor, apparently we need to do a roll call, Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And Mr. Denver is an aye, thank you everyone, please be healthy and safe, thanks.
Yeah.
Good night.